Hold it, Cath. You'd be like Magnificus or something.
Okay. Well, let's call our meeting to order. It's Tuesday, March 1st, 9:00 a.m. Minister reports received at five.
I have the first February 2016 P report.
Okay. Commissioner committee liaison reports, upcoming meetings, events.
Got Missouri Association of Communities Board meeting tomorrow. We have Communities on Thursday, right?
Right.
Where's it at?
I think just the Chamber.
Okay. University of Missouri Extension meeting Thursday night. Eastside Business Association meeting Friday morning. That's most of the fun ones. There's Healthy Schools, Healthy Community Council meeting, oh, maybe the 11th and 3rd also. That's Karen's thing.
Mm-hmm.
That's it.
We got that meeting with Wilson Group tomorrow?
Yeah, at 9:00 a.m.
We don't do it either.
Well, it's the courts. It's gonna be Greg and the Wilson Group and then the court.
Yeah, but not like we.
No. Uh-uh, we don't. I'll be here.
Okay. I was saying, I'm probably gonna be here as well.
I didn't ask you.
Yeah, all right, no doubt.
I got a September meeting tomorrow off the CBB, 11:30. Supposed to be meeting in the Chamber Thursday afternoon. Karen Fliders at 1:30 on the Thursday. I'm in Chicago.
Cool, are you dressed?
Yeah, there you go.
I've got a YP lunch Wednesday.
YP?
Young professional. I'm their dad. Lincoln University 150th anniversary meeting, three on Thursday. Central Bank reception for Dave Minton, the new CEO, Thursday night. I leave Dallas Sunday. You're gonna be in Chicago, be in Dallas.
We do have a Parks Committee meeting on Tuesday. That day, your commission. Forgot our meeting got moved to Wednesday next week.
I'll be back.
We're gonna be on one here. We're gonna get stuff done.
Yeah.
You're in charge.
Next week.
You're gonna be in charge. I know you.
Y'all see anything? Just called that. Call maybe. Okay, bids and contracts. Signing of the Central Missouri Foster Care and Adoption.
This is for $5,000, that's the budget for this year.
This is what?
The Missouri Foster Care and Adoption.
We're aware of that.
Okay.
I'll make motion to sign the contract with Center, Central Missouri Foster Care.
A second. Roll call.
Uh, Sam?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chris?
No.
Signing of the annual emergency management grant applications.
Basically, it's not actually signing, but we don't know what our award will be. Once we get the award, that's when we'll come back and do the signing. But in preparation of the annual grant has to be brought before permission is approved to even apply. So this is the grant that I put in for every year that reimburses the county on emergency management, office of emergency management. What I put in there this year as far as our grant and budget, kinda looking like we did last year. Last year, we were able to recoup $62,000. So in this, I include the insurance on the vehicles in the building that we put out, so we'll get half of that back. Any maintenance is all as far as ALC, copier, computer, anything like that, telephone, satellites. Last year, I put in to that we could recoup part of our money for outdoor warning services, maintenance contract. This year, I included that, but I bumped that up quite a bit in case we had to start replacing some batteries. They're like $80 apiece, as we discussed some last year. So I put in some funds in that as a request, so we can at least get half of our money back if that's approved. Just general office supplies and vehicle maintenance, fuel, and stuff like that. Just the basic things they allow you to put in for. So in total, my request to the state will be $102,000. Half of that would be $51,434.50 for the R part. And the reimbursement would be the other part. So this is due like Friday at 5:00 o'clock, so we've got that all done and put together. The only thing I need to know, and as I put out the email earlier, if the commission still will approve either a part-time or full-time person to refill Debbie's taxes, I need to know that so I can put it in today or in this grant. If we're not, I'll leave it out. This also covered half of my salary and benefits. And as we talked before, that also, last year with that position, we recouped half of all that funds as well. So if I can put it in now, if we don't use it, we'll have to give it back. I mean, we lost, I think they told me the other day, our town size fund was a little over $16,000. Now, that's 62, that we gave back to the state for that grant. So that's kinda where I'm at. Everything's done except whether we're going L position or not, part-time or full-time.
Do we need to fill a bill or?
It would be nice to have at least part-time Chris, I mean, the paperwork and, you know, that just takes a lot of time. You know, if I had somebody even 12 hours a week, it would be great. Like right now, there's nobody there to even answer the phones or open the door. EMS both are both in training, so our offices are sitting there empty. We don't have anybody out there, and that, you know, that happens quite a bit, too. I don't know a lot of stuff that Debbie might need somebody to help with. If not, that's fine.
So can you get by with just a part-time person?
Part-time would be great. I mean, just somebody to help with a lot of the paperwork. Not only this grant, but a lot of the other stuff that goes on in the emergency management office. It'd be nice to have somebody do some of the paperwork. It takes a lot of hit. A lot of work off of me as far as some of the very times, you know, every quarter, we have to put in our reimbursement requests. It's, you know, the paperwork kind of ties down a lot during the day. And there's deadlines to meet, so a part-time would be fine with me. I have no problem. But if we do that, I'd like to at least be able to put it in until we get our cost recoup, part of our cost recoup. Kinda where I'm at.
I don't have any problem. Part-time person, we don't have to pay benefits, and if we're getting part of our salary, part of the salary reimbursed, hell, it's a kind of a win-win.
I kinda think so myself, and the other thing that that person would be used for. But just in my office alone, you know, trying to cover all the meetings and all the other paperwork, it's pretty busy.
Pretty busy. We can apply for it, and then if we don't fill it, we just?
Exactly.
Give the money back.
Right, I like to do that.
I say go ahead and apply for it. If we don't fill it, we don't fill it. I just kinda struggle with it year to year, then they know they're gonna be part-time, as long as they know their job's not permanent.
Yeah.
It's as long as the grant's there.
Exactly. And that's the only thing, as long as I can get through to put in for a part-time person. Either 12-hour a week, 20-hours, whatever, you know, feel, but it's the time I need to put in to try and get it covered back. That's my only point.
So at this point, we're gonna apply for it on the grant and get it, then we hire the part-time?
I'm good with that, we'll look at it later. But we put in for it now. That's the biggest thing on the emergency performance grant, is salaries, benefits, key dollars, running, the other stuff that's small. But, you know, out of the $5 million payable, 97% of that salary benefit is from the state. We'll get your approval to do that before, and then we'll send that in, and we'll see what happens when we get it in.
So Bill, do we need to sign the grant application?
No, this is just the application process for this grant. Once it's awarded, I'll bring that back to the commission, and then once we sign it, then the money kicks in. And very early this year, you know, we had done this till May or June.
I think you do it fantastic. So my personal department, so.
Well, thank you. Paperwork, it would help.
Yeah.
Seriously. So I'll do that if that's approved with the commission, and we'll get that put in, see what we get from there.
If you would just let us know, you know, if you're gonna apply for a 20-hour a week, or a 20-hour a week person, or 12-hour a week person, or, I mean, I just?
I'm good with, I think 12 would be good. Come on there, a few hours, like I said, there's nobody in our office now.
We're Jennifer.
Yeah, she's not there.
They're posted, but just someday, there's nobody there. There's a lot of phone calls, people come to the?
Somebody rings your door that's not, I mean, if there's nobody there, doesn't ring that?
No.
EMS dispatch or something?
No.
Then we need to get that changed.
I don't think they'd answer anyway, really. I mean, in the dispatch office.
Will somebody ring their door, don't they answer? They walk in door?
They get that buzzer, it's what the camera sees, it isn't what it means. Okay, I'll do that, and then we'll come back.
Sounds good.
Okay. Thank you.
Chris, signing of a lease purchase agreement with GFI.
Hello, so I guess in our research hours, we replaced one copier, then the other one downstairs stopped working. And that one is on a lease from GFI, so when we contacted, we've contacted all the companies again, but GFI will come get that machine, give us a new machine that in the agreement covers 5,000 pages a month, and all the toner maintenance, et cetera, and our payment actually goes down $20 a month. So we would like to get a new copier downstairs.
And you're saving us money.
Twenty more.
Okay.
So does our maintenance, I mean, are we using 5,000 pages a month on the printer? Is it true, black and white, everything's black and white on it?
Yeah, everything's black and white, and that one is used by everyone downstairs, the printer and the copier. So I would imagine that we probably do use close to that because it's used by all of the week staff and the front desk staff. Every time someone comes in, we have to make a copy of their identification. And make copies of the TV desk, they can have a copy, so, yeah, it's probably the highest utilized machine in the building.
So when it says high resolution color touchscreen, that's just, that's just the screen?
Yeah, where you select what you wanna do.
Just all black and white?
Yeah.
This was the lowest from all the companies that you contacted, or did you contact anybody else?
We contacted, uh, one, the other com, datacom, and, yeah, there was, this was an outright purchase, we had not a lease plan.
Okay.
And it was, I think the machine might have been cheaper, but it wasn't gonna be able to, with the high volume that's downstairs. This is a more robust, robust machine, and it's on a pay plan like we have now, so it's not paying the money outright. We're just reducing our monthly.
Does this cost include ink and stuff, or?
Yes, it includes toner, maintenance, labor, parts, and the IT help set up. The only thing it does not include is paper.
Okay.
I'm good, too.
What do we need to do here, Christine? Sign the contract?
Yes.
I'm either we sign the contract with GFI or a Shark AR 355 lease copier.
I'll search it. Sounds a lot like a gun, Christine, I'm trying to sneak something through. AR in there.
Yep. It's a Navy, I see.
All in favor?
Aye. That's more options than.
I know, Roger, you're terminated.
I've gotta deviate a little bit from our, our schedule, 'cause we've got Bill Tanger with FEMA here. Bill Farr and I had met with him last week, and he's gonna make just a five-minute presentation. And I, we did get an email from Bill Farr today where you're, you've got a crew out in the city, county.
There is a crew in the county, maybe they're disaster survivor assistance, and they're out canvassing the critical areas in the county that had the most damage and are suspected of having some other households that maybe you ought to register for. Yep, sorry.
Yeah, it doesn't amplify, but it does record, so, yeah.
Oh, great. First of all, I wanna give you a, oh, what do they say? I've already got one. Do you need another one today?
Thank you.
Sure. Oh, no, you're fine.
You figure, all your paper.
Trying to see if government, I mean, I don't. So anyway, I'll try to do this in five minutes, it's gonna be a speed read. I can talk so fast, it's incomprehensible, but I won't do that. So I'm Bill Tanger, I'm the intergovernmental affairs specialist for FEMA and for a five-county area. And so what I'd like to do today is kinda bring you up to speed on a couple of things. And the main reason I feel it's worthwhile listening for the five minutes is this disaster declaration is different from previous ones. The previous declarations were called Public Assistance, PA. And in the past, in some counties around here, this is their fifth declaration, and that's since 2011. So it's been almost one year for some counties. But, so if you look at your notebook on the left-hand side, at the first page is a declaration page, and it talks about how the, the, this disaster was declared, this sort of individual assistance, which is different from PA. And that's the main point I wanna make today, I guess, is that IA programs are different from PA. So this is the first IA program that's happened in this, in this area in a long time. So Cole County was not in the PA designation this, that was February 10. We get it, five, five counties, they had two that were declared the PA, that's Camden and Gascogne. Anyway, that gives you the declaration. The next thing in your folder is an intergovernmental weekly update. I really like this little publication. This is maybe two, three pages at the most, gives you some insights into the whole disaster and FEMA involvement. The two things I would point out is the buy the numbers box that shows you how much money has been approved in Missouri for this disaster, to this point, it's over $10 million. About eight and a half million of that is for housing issues for people who, you know, had their homes made unlivable and are having to get some major assistance. And the other page is a list of the disaster recovery centers. You should just be familiar with them in the sense that this is an IA thing, so this is where the public can go to register for FEMA programs. There are a variety of programs, but of all of them, you gotta go register and get a number, and so that you can, then be inputted into the system, and then inspectors come out, look at your damages, and make your report and so forth. Again, there's a lot of detail in these things. The next one is just a list of programs in the state of Missouri, including rental payments, unemployment payments, SBA loan interest loans, that's what. Right onto the next page, which is the disaster assistance page, that lists housing assistance. Real quick, just the three various types of housing assistance. One is temporary, as you can see, the next one is repairs, and the next one, the last one, replacement. Those are the three basic forms of housing assistance that FEMA provides in a disaster. The next sheet is a single sheet that's just a flow chart, is a sequence of delivery, what we call sequence of delivery is really the order of things in a disaster. And, and, of course, the first thing is voluntary agencies, but the only other thing I'd point out is insurance is number two. And before, if you're gonna go register, you really need to go and talk to your insurance company first, and make sure that you got, that they have that covered, because I wanna be double-dipping, you know, people going to get the money from insurance and then also from FEMA. The next page is SBA, so I'm coming on the right-hand side now. Oh, in that same left-hand pocket is a really detailed brochure of individual assistance. That's really all 99% of the people need to know about IA. If you have any other questions, I'm your go-to guy. So just give me a call, you got my cards with a phone number and email. SBA, it really, for both businesses and individuals and homes, you can borrow, believe it or not, up to $2 million for a business, up to $200,000 for a home, and the interest rates are extremely good. There are a lot of caveats. If the, you want to need a loan in the marketplace, the banks and so forth provide loans at those rates, you should, you have to go there first. But if you cannot get a loan, you draw a loan, SBA can provide one. And again, when you register, you can register online, you can register by phone, you can register in person at a DRC. When you go there, that's part of the process, you can register for SBA as well. Okay, five minutes. Okay, hazard mitigation. I would tell you that Mr. Farr over here has a hazard mitigation program that he's put in place, and I understand is excellent. So you've got a real expert here, of your staff, so to speak. But this is a, this is a separate program. This is for serious repetitive claims. We have a building, our home, that gets flooded on a regular basis. You've got a long-term problem, and that problem can be addressed through hazard mitigation. I put the sheets in here for public assistance, although you do not meet some threshold of public assistance, but I want you to have them in this folder, and so you can skip right by that. Should be close to the end of your folder, right? The whole point of this folder is, you know, this is the first time you've had individual assistance, that declaration site. I encourage you to keep this folder on file, I mean, each of you, I'm sure, wanna have a separate one, and because unfortunately, other disasters do occur. So if they do, and you get declared for IA as well as PA, you'll have that folder there, you'll have everything you need in one place. And hopefully, and as other things come up, we'll get you copies of those, or if you're agreeable, I'd like to be able to send you an email or two, maybe one or two a week at the most, that would give you some updates on other things.
Yeah, I get your email.
Yeah, I got yours. But, I didn't know about Chris.
Yep, yep.
I grabbed all my cards on the way out. I had this on my.
Yeah, you're putting there, Chris gave me.
Okay.
Some of your buddies.
I can give out my email, hey, there you go. I got a whole stack of your cards.
I can't.
You're gonna start getting some magazines, too.
They're good, bro, they're playing.
Okay, so.
Give them out.
So I wanted to ask you five-minute crash course. Again, any questions? You wanna go to any depth of any other detail, or any that you're probably ask me now, or call me later? The only other thing I mentioned is that Sam and Bill, we talked last time we met, about a, a success story, FEMA program success story, and he recommended we talk to Larry, which I did, and Larry gave me some photos this morning. We're gonna look at maybe doing a little success story on that. I don't know if that'll happen or not, because it's time elements and money and all that. But this, this county, I think, has a good success story to talk about. And if they, FEMA proceeds with it, then they would take pictures as the work progresses. I understand it's about to start, depending on the weather. And then, and then follow it along till it's done. So it could be a good thing, everything. That's it, my five minutes are up. Questions? Comments?
So who qualifies for this stuff, then? If it's, I mean, they've got insurance, and insurance just doesn't cover something, or how does it?
Right, let me, let me, that's a good question. So say somebody's home is damaged, first of all, it has to be a primary home, can't be a secondary home. You've got a lot of secondary homes around the lake, which is not qualified. It's gotta be a situation where somebody has displaced out of their home, or they have some serious damages that are not covered by insurance. And then, depending on, the goal of somebody is not to replace everything to where it was before, the disaster, the goal is to make things functional so that the survivors can get back to their jobs and move back into a house once it's made livable, and that sort of thing. So to answer your question, I guess, it's those parties who, for whatever reason, have not been covered by other insurance, by, and have, have got to get some kind of help to be functional. And it, for example, the businesses, for example, for the most part, are looking at SBA loans. So that's part of the process. Homeowners may be looking at loans as well, because there's a maximum cap on the amount of money that FEMA, FEMA gives any, any applicant. That's $33,000 a year. That has to cover everything, homes, cars, personal belongings, and medical, dental problems. FEMA also cases can cover funerals. We've had 16 fatalities in this project. So there's a host of things it can cover, but a lot of caveats and qualifications that have to be in place. Can I answer?
I think so. I'm just trying to figure out who, I mean, if you're gonna be, well, in this case, it's floods, right?
Floods, yeah, this was the flood.
So why wouldn't they have insurance if they live in a flood area to cover this kind of stuff?
Lucky, lucky, good question.
By, by the way, they don't have insurance, but. So if they got the opportunity to have insurance, will y'all still give them assistance? Or do you say, hey, you had a chance to have insurance, you didn't do it? Too bad. I mean, I've got insurance on, you know, full coverage on vehicles, too, and just, right? Because I wanna be able to replace it if something does happen.
Right.
I got fire extinguisher at home, too, I don't have to use it, but.
So this is good. And I can answer, there's two answers to that. First answer is yes, if somebody, for whatever reason, let's say they didn't have enough insurance covered, but they, but they need us, for example, the car gets flooded, and your car is pulled, and FEMA's gonna help them out because they want, FEMA wants the person to be able to work, get back to work and have a job, and take care of the family. So FEMA might provide enough money to buy a functional vehicle that gets them the working back, but it's not gonna replace their Cadillac, whatever. So, yes, that can happen, and then what also will happen is if that homeowner wants assistance, the homeowner's gonna have to agree to carry insurance. So it's kind of a carrot stick. If the homeowner expects to accept that assistance, they're gonna have to sign a contract and agree to carry insurance. I forget how many years it is, but, but the point is, they have to agree to do that. So it's a, it's a major encouragement for homeowners who have inadequate insurance to get that insurance.
Is this a shift from post-flood of 93, 95, where FEMA had said that if you live in a flood plain, that you don't have, you don't buy flood insurance, and it won't ever insure you again, you wanna take care of it now?
I have never heard that statement. I don't think, yeah, they did, I mean, they have, my, my historical recollection of that is FEMA. Wouldn't say that, they caveat and say, if you don't, for example, if you don't. If you live in a flood plain, and your, your home gets flooded five times in 10 years, whatever, they could say, FEMA's gonna say, you can't, you know, we can't insure your home unless you elevate that home. Okay, now, there's some options there. For example, if a person has a home, and they wanna have insurance on their home, and they're two feet below the flood level, they're gonna pay a really expensive, really expensive insurance, thousands of dollars a year. If they're at the level where the flood plain is, then they pay a reasonable rate. If they elevate their home, or their home is two feet above the flood level, their insurance rates are really, really mild.
Okay, where are we?
Hazarding numbers, 'cause it depends on the insurance company, but it's all backed by FEMA. So the point is, that's another motivator to, for people to get insurance, or to flood-proof their homes. Okay? Okay? Or? That's it?
I might say, I mean, they've really done a good job, FEMA, the people, we began yesterday, they have a team of people that's actually going door-to-door, especially along our river, Old Saint River areas, where those people were affected, so just to ensure that someone doesn't get missed.
And they've uncovered some people who should have applied or should have registered, but haven't. So, you know, it's not a whole block, but the point is that what they do, you know, people.
We have eight, and they, this president.
Eight, eight more in the county. And the point is, they're there, and they go through, and then they're gone. In fact, you know, FEMA, all of FEMA, our job is to take care of the survivors, make sure that all the programs are well-known. Known, five minutes, nine. And then we, we work ourselves out of a job and go to the next disaster or whatever. So. So that's what TSA people are doing, and that's what FEMA does.
Well, I appreciate you reaching out to us.
I'm sorry, it's a link, oh, one other thing. The registration deadline, okay? Every project on IA, individual assistance, has a deadline beyond which people, like, the door is closed. That's March 21st, three weeks from today. For people, anybody who knows got injured damages, they need to register pronto. I think that's everything.
So, thank you, sir.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you for listening, I appreciate you taking the time, it's probably more than five minutes.
All right, it's all right. That's fine.
I don't mean to be insensitive, if you live by the river, you're. Yeah, I have to struggle with some of this stuff.
Okay.
I might go live there too, but keep your bill in my house.
I'll go back a little bit, bid awards?
I'm sorry, we don't have that.
We don't have any, no bid awards?
Something like that.
Okay.
I'm finished business.
Like underneath bid awards?
Yeah.
Discussion of salary study?
Well, I thought maybe they were gonna sneak some in.
Oh, no, we're sneaking.
So we talked about this, and just kinda keep it on the agenda here. I think Debbie is checking with the city, and they're currently doing something with salary study. I think it's important that we look at this, and try to see at least where we're at in the whole scheme of where our salaries are and where they should be.
They currently do have an RFP out for salary study, a comprehensive one, and that is due in March 23rd. So between Jennifer and all the people are years on that, they try to get a copy of that, most of those figures are. And it's everything from the job descriptions, to the grades, to the classifications, to the market value. Kind of have them hear about it, so.
Yeah, 'cause I think this is gonna, this is gonna be kind of above our pay period. That needs some help on, some looking at the whole.
And the city is a little different than us, but yeah, it will give us an idea of what we're looking at.
Kristen, weren't you checking?
I did check. Franklin County is currently in the process of having this reviewed, it's not completed yet. They used someone from Arizona called Public Sector Personnel Department. They're going to share what is in, what is completed, but it's not completed yet. St. Charles County also completed one in 2015, they used Evergreen Solutions. He did share that they paid $65,000.
What Franklin County, do you know?
I don't know.
That would probably come closer to Mary.
City of Joplin actually helped me, this week, they're conducting one themselves, and they have a home department with this city, so that's what they helped me about, the home department. So they're doing it themselves, they've classified over 16 different city departments themselves.
Who's that?
City of Joplin.
This seems like that, you know, all these counties are doing this, and it'd be nice if there was a state-wide one or something, that you had a multiplier for your county. You know, cost of living multiplier, and you could just say, okay, you know, St. Louis might be a 1.42 or something, and Cole County might be a .9. I mean, if you get you close, it's not gonna be perfect system, anyway. I think we should keep talking about this, and try to get something done.
I think the Department is thankful to reach out to, we picked a series of counties. If we pick a series of counties, whether it's, St. Charles County is not a good match for us, but Cape Girardeau County is a good match, Jasper County's a fairly good match. We still have to look at the city of Jefferson, we have to look at Columbia, we have to look at Boone County. We should look at Calhoun County, but with that grouping and the others as well, as in our case, control, it's easy for us to reach out and get what those figures are. And I think we can do this for a whole lot cheaper, but it comes down to what you're actually willing to do, what you're willing to look at adopting as base salary rates across the board for each of the different divisions within this county, and what you're willing to look at for step increases, merit increases. And I think coming to that and making decisions is a pretty simple thing. And I think spending a lot of money, which we've done several times in the past, and never followed through with, it has proved to be a good thing.
So I was just thinking about this on the drive in, and so, one of the things, LB and Ralph, and a lot of you guys are here. Sheriff. Anyway, so as we look at a salary study, and as we give a COLA, you know, we've talked that the COLA ought to raise the grid. Well, so the downside to that is, is if someone gets a COLA for every year that they've been here, and we raise the grid, when we hire a new person in at that position, they're making the same as the person that maybe's been here for 20 years.
I agree with that, and that's why you have to look at longevity steps as well. If the person's not worth retaining, then we should get rid of them. And if they are worth retaining, there is, as Mark Ellinger would've said, I don't like survival pay, but that's what it comes down to. You take a person who's dedicated themselves to that particular position, and he shared their building that, but a new person comes in, they come in at the step plus the COLA. And you're still, you're not, you're alleviating the salary spread by doing so. And there's still the opportunity for merit on top of it. The other thing, which is not everybody comes to us with the same skill set. If we hire somebody that's got 10 years' experience, a great deal of training and education, perhaps military background, maybe it may be of more value to us initially, and there should be a way to bring them in at a higher, higher level than somebody that doesn't have that same training and education experience.
Yeah, there's no easy solution. I'm open to looking at all that, but, you know, I don't, rather than bringing that to us and saying, hey, I've got an opportunity to hire this guy at this rate, here's why I want to pay more than what the beginning salary is. I, you know, I don't know how you do that.
Well, I think Russell, we would like to do this, if you came to us, and you meant the basic qualifications, but we wanted you at that base level. If you came to us and had five years' experience, 10 years' experience, we would have a built-in, built-in amount that we give you for that. If you came to us, we think there should be a military bump. We also think that if you've got a great deal of, if you've got a bachelor's degree, if you've got a master's degree, it may be advantageous to us as well, there should be a bump to that, is what I think. If we just have it kind of set in stone, that means that when we negotiate with them, this is what we've got to work with.
I hear what you're saying, but I'll go back to what Mark Ellinger used to say, as a clerk, is a clerk, is a clerk. And so, you know, maybe in your department too, you know, I don't know how you differentiate between, you know, someone that's at the same level, you know, how is someone worth this much, and someone's worth this much, so.
Well, to look at it, and I'll pick on Mark, if I'm gonna hire an attorney to defend me in something, I'm pretty selective, because not all attorneys are created equal, not all clerks are created equal. Not all cops are created equal.
Richard, still the same position, with the same job, should be.
Salaries, just like every year, it's a very touchy subject within the county, very personal, people. I question the city as far as, you know, they have an HR staff. They could've designed their own house, but yes, they went out. You know, it becomes very personal, very touchy. So we've only done one other time, when we did Archer's, as far as I can remember.
Last I can remember, before that, Bob Jones had said, well, then in the past, we've done, we've done at least once before that quarter.
But, so I'm just saying, it becomes very personal, becomes very touchy, and it happens to that.
I agree with Chris, we need to look at, I don't know, I don't know what the answer is. Maybe we need.
And Sheriff, if you've got something, I mean, the longevity is gonna be a hard one for me, because I'm trying to look at that from both sides, and I mean, if you're a valuable employee, and we're given a COLA and a merit pool, which you've done in the past, you know, you're seeing those increases. But why should you get longevity? You're doing the job, you're exceeding, you know, you're getting a COLA and a merit. But you wanna get longevity on top of that?
I think the ideal position, there's a lot of ways to look at longevity. And one of them could be simply having three stages. You've got an entry-level stage, you've got a competency stage, you've got a master's stage, whatever you wanna label those, that's a type of step, a type of longevity at the same time. And I think that's valuable. If we can be consistent with merit, then that's a good thing. And the last couple of years, you guys have been really consistent, and I appreciate that. And COLA, honestly, COLA is such a unique thing, we just say COLA, but we know there's many, many, many kinds. And I would prefer that we look at COLA, looking on heating costs, looking on grocery costs, rather than on the ones traditionally used. There's a lot of ways to approach it. But whatever we do, if we kind of set it in stone, so an employee knows in the future what's coming, I think that's really helpful, to the president being up in the air every year.
So then you're saying that because they've been here that long, that they're entitled?
No, because it's still based on competency levels, if you do it, if you do the steps.
I mean, the way I see it is, if an employee's valuable, he gets the raise. If the employee ceases to become valuable, he starts not getting the raise, and I may try to start weaning him out.
Well, by the same token, we've been criticized for actually using our, what we do merit, using our online system that we do have developed, to actually look at each individual and their productivity, their competencies within their productivity, and we feel like we'll have to reward those. If we've got this pool of money, we can reward those people. And this person truly gets less, or may not get any at all, because they're not doing it as well. And it's okay that we have different people making different salaries. I can tell you, when we rebuilt our house, I can tell you, hiring the people that we hired to redo our floors was the greatest thing that we'd ever done. Hiring the guy to finish drywalling was an absolute waste of money. He'll never get hired again. And if it was with an agency, if I met somebody that did badly, see, he will separate. But if I've got somebody who's meeting the minimum standards, I'm gonna keep him. But I really want to reward that guy that just exceeded every time that the clock turns. And if I'm free to do that, that's a really good thing. The other thing is that long-term, if a person, if a person outside the scope of what we do for that is getting that degree, and their reports are reflecting the benefit of that, they've spent a lot of their own money accomplishing it. And I think that's where you look at steps. And that step doesn't have to be longevity, it can be that level of competency, like you do in public justice. That's a good thing. We just like all of that.
I think, you know, just throw them out to set them, the fourth thing is, Bill has a merit pool, Bill, to give raises to the people that deserve, you know, for a number of years. If we only had COLAs, we weren't allowed, we didn't have to do the merit. And I think that's where you move a lot of your good people up, so.
And perhaps it's time to have some elected official department head meetings aside from just a commission meeting, so we can kind of get down on the weeds on this, rather than take that great deal of time.
I agree with that. I think all the department heads and elected officials, as well as the Michigan town, are confident consensus on how it's gonna be done across the board, so that we don't have some of this jockeying we have from one year to the next. On my part, it deserves raises, and I don't care about it, but, you know, I think it's be a lovely, not playing field, so everyone's treated fair.
So can we, can we give, kind of, give everybody some instruction? Give them about maybe 30 days, and let's do some homework, see what we come up with, and then maybe get back together with the elected officials, see, you know, if we can have some ideas at least to throw out, on how you guys would like to see increases. You know, if we're able, this year, or the end of this year, for next year. But, I mean, I like the merit, but I also think that our salaries are so low that we have to almost use the COLA to try to catch up to.
Maybe it's a year where we look at initially moving up the base?
And that's true, too.
Do that, then everybody would have to move.
Right, yeah, everybody would move.
The base would affect.
Move the base, Bill would move.
So what are we looking towards?
Somewhere about 30 days or something.
Well, 30 is good for me.
Next year, February 30th is.
I was thinking more like March 30th of this year.
Just to your turn. I have to tell the February 30th is around now. I don't mind waiting and seeing what happens with the Jeff City study, and just see how it turns out, and kind of carry on.
We're not a yesterday, we could've said it with the next year, but that's next.
Yeah, I'm here waiting for you.
And if we get some information from maybe Franklin County, or maybe even St. Charles. I have problems spending $65,000 on a study that, the Archer study, we didn't actually implement that either. Are we gonna implement it, we're gonna implement it to the T, or we're gonna get people pay decreases? If they do their job right, get that much.
The problem with we implemented the Archer study, we just didn't have enough money budget-wise to keep up with it. So there lies that when the sheriff is asking for a commitment, it's kind of hard to do a commitment when you're not sure of the money in each bump, you know. Yes, you could do that, but it could be deficit spending, could be something else has to be cut, you know. Obviously, the biggest part of our budget is salary.
Archer's studies seem to be out of date really early, really quick, though, to me. And I think it kind of depends on certain things. At one point, we have trouble finding nurses. So you make adjustments there, you know, five years later, you may not have the same thing. You may have plenty of them for whatever reason, more of a flooded market with them, but. And I think we have been lucky to be consistent with the merit, and I would rather put that in your office name than let you do that. I'm hoping to meet with all the local officials and working, to try to come across the board with something. I guarantee around the range of a bunch of people up, so we're gonna have to have a way to pay for it. So in the next four years, we may be doing budgets that some departments maybe don't get a raise to try to bring the other ones up to them. I don't know how that's gonna work, how that's gonna be accepted. Bringing everybody else's up, but mine's not gonna come up, because you don't have enough money to do it across the board.
Well, if we don't sit down and talk through, so. We've got, our training room is large enough to hold everybody.
I mean, I just don't, I think if we don't schedule something, it won't get done.
I agree.
Anyway, so if we can, maybe Debbie, if you could send some out to all the elected officials when we get together.
Like I said, in 30, 30 days, or whatever.
Is there something in particular that you want each elected official to come up with before that 30 days?
I'm open to whatever ideas they have, I'll bet that one.
Can you find that our county partner?
Except for LB, I'm not open to that.
Yeah, I think.
Is there certain places we wanna try to compare to, or something? We wanna try to work to see where we fall in line with other people? Should have each elected official brief their department comparable? Isn't that something we wanna look at? Or do we just wanna throw ideas out at the person?
It can be both.
I think it's fine, I mean, I think we ought to look at other counties that are similar to us.
I think Cape Girardeau County, seems like we're compared to them strongly. Yeah, and I think, I think Franklin County probably would be similar to us, too. If you guys go to the commissioners meeting in Nevada next week, you might talk to them, you might talk to.
Get a shirt.
You might talk to their commissioners, some of the other commissioners.
They give me an Elmer Fudd hat, I'll go.
It's kind of wild. I got us three hours there and three hours back.
I got a fudg.
You two can bond.
Can't do that. I don't wanna bond. I don't even like to know people's first names. Don't talk about commitment stuff, it's got me all rattled here, so we can move on.
Yeah, I mean, I think if we just leave it up to the individual department heads, or elected officials, to just see what the department heads do, I think we should probably have their, but.
Well. Can we all fit in here, I mean, or do you wanna?
We can, we can set up a big square, and everybody can sit around it and look at each other.
Give each person an opportunity to present some kind of ideas, and we can, we gotta limit it to a certain amount of time, too. Here all day talking about it, because we might as well be back in the budget. Here all day talking about it, because we might as well be back in the budget.
How about, how about our classroom on March thirtieth, March thirty-first? Between nine, we'll block out nine to eleven, how about that?
Seven to nine.
I'm okay with that, I'll do five to nine.
Whatever works, y'all just.
I think it works early.
It works for me, but, you know, I don't.
Anybody have any issue with the date?
What time are we going to do?
That's what? That whole week?
Well, you have to be there for them though. Some of them jelly beans are yours.
No, they prefer.
I got some jelly beans at home.
How about the twenty-fourth? How about the twenty-fourth?
Just get it on schedule, let me know when to be there. If we try to schedule, we're going to meet everybody.
Is there a bond too early for most people?
Well, it's due eight to ten.
Yeah, it's due eight to ten.
That work?
Eight to ten it is.
Okay.
Huh? Oh, yeah.
Perfect.
No, we can't do it, he's not going to be.
You want me to sit at the calendar and write?
No, I'm gone that week, so.
Redo. How about the seventh of April?
Are we still on two thousand sixteen, or we've got through all the dates and everybody's not available?
Or Wednesday, the thirtieth, with that?
No, the auditor.
Not still here, are we?
They're here that whole week.
Well, you can be over there for two hours. If they need you, then we'll call you.
I mean, I can, yes.
Chris, do you think being new, you can chime in on their mind?
So is there anything wrong with Thursday to seven?
After the thirtieth?
Don't pick the thirty-first.
We got a Coca-Cola.
J.C.'s prom that week, so I'm probably.
Are you going to prom?
No, we got, we'll have hundreds of tuxedos.
Well, let's move it to that April. April better.
Hey, they're going to have to work with that, you're saying.
April ninth is J.C.'s prom, so.
You signed up for this. Problem out of the way. So what day are you?
Want to make a money for sales, generate sales tax for county.
Do you just have to do it on your own time, Sam?
April seventh, eighth to tenth.
I might have to leave here about nine thirty.
I'm going to be there for a little while.
We'll call them in by nine thirty.
We can't even get a date figured out. How the hell are we going to figure out any kind of salary?
We'll have Bloody Marys, that'll go.
There you go.
The hostess of Bloody Marys. Right here a second. So looking forward to this one.
Okay.
Change our website. That thing that Chris has, keep on the top of the bar.
Does it?
Okay.
Because now the screen that you can look at, you have this.
Okay, that was our study. Discussion of sale of county property.
Okay, that's me again, so. Still got all these properties that are sitting, we haven't advertised them yet, so to get around.
There was some question over the ownership, even if that one was a sewer. Larry, you shipped out a quick claim deed the other day, so we kind of figured that one out. It's ready to go. Jeff, did you have something you were going to send me on that? Did it say something? If not, that's okay?
Just for listing them, if we're listed them some way, we can give you some examples.
It's, it's done. Do you want to look at it before I send it? Is it good the way it is?
Which one are you talking about?
That property thing that I had sent out.
For just that one property or for?
Well, I assume we do them all.
Because it's been a while back.
Yeah, I assume we do them all at the same time, right?
What would I file? Probably just my needs or everything else.
So.
Well, he's private. Yeah, well, he's looking for that. I mean, we can do it if, I can send you what I have, if you guys are good with it. I kind of talked to Jill before this, I think he left, so I'll talk back. I think I'll just send them down to the recorder's office, any questions they have as far as the parcel itself, and just list the addresses. And then I had the write-up done. And then, I didn't know how long you guys, do you want to do that just like we do with this? Advertise it three consecutive weeks? Do you think it should be shorter, longer, what's adequate in your mind?
Yeah, I mean, as quick as we can get it done. So, I mean, that's what's required, do we have to advertise it three times?
No, there is no law.
Well, it's twice.
You can do whatever you want to, you can put it on the rate. I mean, the law just simply says you can sell property. So there's, there's no, nothing in the statutes, unlike bidding, that says how you have to do it.
But is one time going to be enough to get people to sign and respond, or?
That's why Jennifer's asking you all that.
I'm thinking we're going to need more than one time.
And realistically, if they're going to go, I don't know, if they're going to go check out property, if someone's really interested in it, I don't know how long of a process that would be, you know.
Okay, so the bid list that you sent us, or the property list, I'm sorry, is?
No.
I've got Jose City Lot One, Lot Two, Big Horn Lot. So I'm going to ask, do they still hold off on rents for right now?
There was that, that property used to be that sewer company also, that we're already.
Radio Circle or? Down there, yeah. One there, another one over there, too. But there was something.
Is that Lagoon?
Okay.
The former Lagoon site.
I would suggest you have online on the website, also pictures of G.I.S.
Yeah, with our new website.
Yeah. G.I.S. isn't, I don't know, that's not a legal representation, though.
Yeah, but it's got this one wrong or something. That would, it shouldn't be, I don't have any idea where it is.
That one property.
We've often used it for our tax and property, so.
That sewer property was never, I mean, it was recorded. We got it through a quick claim from the city. And it was recorded back in ninety-five. But the county as owner, according to Jennifer, is not reflected in G.I.S.
Well, I had talked, I'll talk to Ralph after this to pair that up. I know Melissa had looked into it a little bit, and she said she couldn't find it. So then I reached out to public works, and they were able to find that quick claim deed. So we'll kind of straighten that out. But we did confirm that we do own it, which was one of the questions that at first I wasn't sure.
Can we give that to Chelsea, too?
So I guess I'll send you guys what I have, how about that? I'll send you what I have when I get back. If that's okay, we'll go with it, and then we just need to determine now how long you guys feel like you want to advertise.
I don't think one's probably not.
Well, I think it needs to be more than just a classified.
We can do colored ads with both of your pictures. Not the accessory office.
I think, I think we need to do a bigger ad that has maybe some aerials of the pictures on it, and I don't know what that's going to cost, but.
I can, I don't know either, I can reach out to the paper and kind of see.
Maybe a couple of Sundays or something along the lines.
I'll watch, you know, well-stated ad, you're not cheap. Maybe paying more to get rid of what we just gave them.
I could just, Larry suggested we just reference the website, I could put the pictures on there, too. That would probably fix that.
That might be, yeah. That might be better.
Let's just get rid of.
So three weeks?
I think, yeah, one's not going to be enough.
So you're doing a, just a silent auction, or is it going to be closed bids or?
I thought that's what we discussed, was sealed bids.
Refreshing my memory.
I think that's better, trying to sell them on a courthouse.
I don't know if it's going to be any better than yet.
I definitely feel more comfortable opening bids, but try to do something with courthouse that.
So they have to send their money in with it?
No.
That's what it says on the bid form.
Does they have to send in, yeah, whatever it's, I found it to be stamped online.
Please enclose payment for the full amount of the bid. If you are not a successful bidder, the funds will be returned. If you are the successful bid, the successful bidder, the payment will be deposited and a signed copy of the contract will be returned to you.
About fifteen percent down, the Bay of State.
So then you're going to haul them up here to open the bid?
I don't think we want to get in the business of financing something.
Well, none of these profit, well, I could be wrong, but I don't see any of them going for just absorb an amount of money. I mean, you know. I'm open to whatever, I personally don't feel like it's that crazy to ask for the check. I mean, what if they get it and everything's done, and then they don't have, you know what I mean? Or change their mind or whatever.
I don't have a problem with having a check in there.
What about a cashier's check?
Just what I was going to say. Balance, you can.
So we're going to have to get a cashier's check, and you have to mail it back to them when it's made out to the county, so you're going to have to accept the money and then write a check refunding the money if they do a cashier's check. This cashier's check will be made out to Co-County. So, I don't know, if the personal check bounces, I mean, you go to the next bidder.
Greg arrested. I mean, bouncing checks is a crime. And they'll probably prosecute it upstairs because they get a cut.
I know when they sell them on the courthouse, I think they have to pay.
And I think those are, you know, those are a lot of homes and that are going to be worth more money. I'm okay with whatever, obviously, I'm just, whatever you have an idea.
Well, could you tell them they have to pay by the end of the day that we open bids or something? I mean, you're the successful, you have to pay within twenty-four hours, otherwise we'll move to the next bidder or something like that.
I don't think it's a bad idea to have a check for a portion of it.
Yeah.
Check that percentage, and then you have that check or cashier's check in this instance. You have that, I just, the bad thing is you're going to, if you have ten bids, you're going to have ten cashier checks to deal with, and you're going to have to refund the other night.
It becomes a financial nightmare.
So if they give you a personal check for that ten percent or fifteen percent, and then give them ten days to get the balance.
Shows they're interested, because otherwise you might present somebody getting bid on the common.
I'm good either way, I don't think it's going to go for that, that much money, but the full amount's not. Shouldn't be breaking anybody's heart, right?
Break me.
For a dollar?
You just bought a new.
See, I broke you. My next ex-wife is going to give about six dollars. I got to dig it up.
Your next? There we go.
I did a self audit the other day, she gets the next one, she'll give about half, it's going to be about six dollars. And a bag of dogs. And both dogs.
Do you hope not for your next wife's money?
We wouldn't subject anybody to that kind of embarrassment at this point. What do you want to do, boss?
I'd say I'd require ten, fifteen percent.
Which is going to be easier for you, boss. Other boss there, sorry.
Oh, you boss.
I don't, I don't.
I don't know, what do you?
Yeah, we'll disagree, it's going to be at a substantial amount.
Fifteen at least.
I think, yeah, let's say fifteen percent.
Personal check, so we can just send the check back?
They're showing.
As everybody says, it's not going to be for that much money. And, you know, if people bounce a check, there's criminal penalties. And the P.A.'s office will prosecute those because they get money for it.
That's going by Jose City, aren't you, Jeff?
I'm going to buy, I'm going to name it Jeff City. We're going to go way down in the weeds there, Sam.
Yeah, okay.
So fifteen, do fifteen percent?
Let's do fifteen percent.
Okay. And then how many days are we giving them after?
I mean, I don't see somebody going out and having to give them loan or anything.
No, I think forty-eight hours.
They can have things lined up to where they can get a check, even if they are, if it goes for eight thousand, somebody has to borrow eight thousand, I don't know.
So fifteen percent personal check, and then cashier's check due within forty-eight hours? Is that the last thing I heard?
I'd make them all be cashiers or money orders. Till you cash it, you don't know if it's good.
The fifteen percent's going to be singular, though, like Jeff said. We're going to have to deposit all of those and then have them refund checks if the cashier's check will make a first fifteen percent.
But if we do personal check, then we just send them back for the non-winning bidders?
No, we can't, we can't send them back because we don't know if they're good till we cash it. Right?
No, when we open them up that day, we take it, win the bidder, we deposit their check. If it bounces, then we reject their bid completely and go to the next one. And then, once we get.
Payment would be a cashier's. If Jeff buys. Jeff's.
Okay, good enough.
So fifteen percent personal check, and then, okay. You guys want to see this before I send it out?
Run it by one more time.
Yeah.
Okay.
I guess we change our mind or come up with some other brilliant idea.
Yes, for the forty.
Okay. Accounts payable review?
I asked for approval of accounts payable.
They'll hold them in.
Only question I got is, there's two bills in here, one for Atkins coming out of sales tax for ninety-seven thousand, and then one coming out of Clark's, Clark's account for forty-seven thousand.
We split that up, so there was two grants out of the Clark's office, and Lucky used some of his tab, and then he paid a forty-nine of his eleven services. So the balance came out of the account.
Okay. Was that what we agreed upon? I just wanted to, you always have the big ones here at the bottom, so.
That's right.
So you guys got your roller? We're going to hold the check then, till we get it. I move that we approve accounts payable.
A second. Roll call.
Sam?
Yes.
Jeff?
Epstein.
Chris?
Yes.
Okay. Discussion of security.
Is that supposed to be on here, or?
There was two different types, so the one that you wanted me to add, and then we do have a security closed session. So I didn't know if yours was actually a closed session, item two, or if you want to talk about it.
Yeah, it was closed.
Are you talking about access?
Yes.
I don't know that that fits under that.
Are you supposed to have access where?
To the building? To the building?
In the jail?
Well, I thought this was the one where Greg Camp wanted his people to have access to all the buildings. And Jeff Helkey said no. Isn't that right?
Well, yes, basically. So, we want everybody to know who has access where?
I, I'm just looking.
If we're going to start talking about names and certain people, I mean, they're going to have a badge that gets them into wherever.
Yeah. So, where we going to go dig that deep into my thing? And I'm talking with Greg, I mean, these are his people, so not everybody has to have that access to all buildings. But that's something that you, you kind of assign your people to what buildings they need access to. And if they don't need access, I mean, that's, that's something, basically, you can work out with Jeff and Donnie and them.
Right. I mean, prior to Donnie was overseeing us, we had access to what we needed to.
Yeah.
Just write down, this is really what they want, they want access to what buildings. I, back then, we just had everybody in. And now, the only thing we had here, there were like twenty people on the list that had access to all of them. And my thing is I don't know who all needs access to. I know of all the marshals right now, there's only two marshals that access to all the buildings. That's just myself and Jeff. And who else would be there in buildings? The really only buildings we contend with are just this compound here and two blocks.
I would just rather see our access limited. Rather than have a blanket, everybody's got access everywhere to a minimum amount of access that they need right now. And then we can add, if they need to go somewhere else, we can change their access for a day or whatever. I mean, I think we have that ability to give somebody access for a day and then it, and then it goes off. But to have just blanket access, I mean, then it kind of defeats the, the feat really having security at some point. I mean, I'm not saying that, nothing against.
Well, I don't think most of your people have blanket access to all the buildings, do they?
Pranger Center could be a real problem too.
They did. They don't now. Because we cleaned it up quite a bit.
We tied things down while we were having, nothing was done that shows approval type of, like, structure. Particularly when they asked you to go.
And I wasn't invited to that meeting, so I don't know what exactly was approved at that time. But a prime example was Rodney sitting in a bid without T M B complete. He couldn't get in because the badge didn't work, wouldn't let him in. Luckily, he was able to get in through EMS, related to through EMS, so he could leave. But, you know, it's, it also going to come down to, uh, if they're restricted, if we go to this trade extraction where people can't get into buildings when they're on vacation or somebody gets sick, it's going to become an issue. Because who's, I'm not going to be able to remember who's got rights to get in half the buildings. And who has no rights to get in. And likewise, if you use a badge, most of you have codes, anybody should have to punch in with that badge. And we're going to know who comes and goes anyways. Plus all the cameras in all the buildings too.
I think it's just bodily important with, with Pranger, with the law enforcement center.
I agree.
So, I mean, I just don't think that everybody needs access. I mean, if you've got three or four that, you know, somebody's sick, who are you going to send here? So, I, I don't know how to work that out, but I mean, if we want to get down the weeds, I think it needs to come.
Right now, all your people don't have access to every building.
Not that I'm aware of.
I don't just get access to one. Yeah. So, I think maybe you just need to sit down with them and go over who needs access to what buildings and.
Can we do it by building or can, or is it just certain?
By user and then you tell us which building.
Because she can contact the people, like I heard, oh, they said no people are going to go out there.
Right. And I think if you have somebody on vacation and then you're going to send somebody over there, we can.
I think that way, if you have somebody sick, she knows who's coming, not just us.
Yeah.
Yeah, Greg, why don't you just submit by user, which building, and then we'll go from there.
Uh, good enough.
Okay. Can always be changed too, so, yes.
Okay. Appointment to TIP Commission, we found, Melody found there, I'm on the TIP Commission and so is Larry Ben, so I don't think we.
Mark used to be.
Yeah, I took, when we were reassigning, when I came in.
Sam Martin, in January.
Yeah, when we were reassigning.
Last year, January.
Yeah.
He was already appointed to that.
And we sent that to the city already, so I'm, I'm legal.
Oh, okay.
And I thought the city meant Larry Benson and they meant Larry Ben.
Yeah.
So, Larry disregard my email, please.
So, doesn't the TIP Commission automatically say, uh, an appointment and, and the county commissioner or something, or their designated, or?
No, we get to pick two people.
Just appoint, two people appointed.
How long are those terms?
There, I don't think there is a limit.
Larry Ben's, a copy that Melody found, he was appointed in twenty thirteen.
I'd have to look for sure, Kristen, but I don't recall a limit.
I would like to see either Larry Benson or like to see a doctor or somebody that's financially involved. Because sometimes we get cut down the loop and are told that.
Well, that's why I thought Larry Benson would be good because he.
Right.
Deals with taxes and knows the tax impacts.
Right.
And all of that. And he's a businessman.
So, Larry Ben's probably wouldn't be upset if we. Do, do you really want to be on the TIP, the TIP Commission?
I just seem not, but.
He does recite his budget too, because the tax levy for him, as well as the tax levy for G R is affected when TIPS are accepted. As you see by that one, I.
But I think our, the commissioner can speak to that, yes.
So, the problem with appointments and stuff, and I don't know if it's a one-year appointment, that's fine, but as commissioners come and go, you know, it should say commissioner or commissioner designated.
That's up to you all. The statute's not that specific.
Right. I mean, if it's, if it's a three-year appointment and the commissioner goes off, then.
Well, you could vote to pull it off if you wanted to.
If you wanted to, I would.
No, I'm just saying, it's, you know.
I mean, it's up to you all. You have wide discretion to do whatever, whenever. And it's not like we have TIPS every six months.
Everybody wants something to pack? Or somebody else to pay?
I mean, we keep Larry and myself, then we can report back to Kristen and Larry or we can.
You guys decide, don't ask me.
Come to a meeting?
That's a public.
Yeah.
Meeting.
So, Thursday.
April eleventh, five-thirty, City Hall.
You're looking at me for what?
Where is date?
Cocktails to follow.
When is there a meeting coming up?
Yeah, April eleventh.
At the Norfolk River, so.
I know, I sent it to the wrong Larry. You just said Larry. And so, I was just thinking Larry Benson, because he's the person I talk to all the time when we're sorting out what these TIPS mean. And last time, when they screwed up.
Yeah, the Dunklin's.
The Dunklin straight line. I worked with Larry and the city to get it straightened out.
Good?
You good, Larry Ben? Larry Benson?
I'll do as requested, so.
You only have one person besides you.
I know, I know.
So, we can bring as many people.
We can bring, yeah, because there is a.
They just don't vote.
So, if they want to come on April eleventh?
If they can advise.
I think I'm busy that night.
I'm probably going to bring my, my advanced basketball class, April eleventh.
I just want to ask one more question about that, Jill. Whenever they do receive a notice, and basically that notice came certified mail of a public hearing, should that be entered into the county clerk as information? Or not?
Well, I mean, entered into the county clerk is information for what?
As a record that's been received by the commission.
If you want to. But, but, I mean, the city is the one that's issuing the tip, not us. We just happen to have a couple of people on the commission, plus it would affect our tax records.
Yeah, and that's why I'm asking, because that's our tax.
You know?
Should it be recorded somehow?
It's just like any other mail you get. If you want to give it to them, give it to them. I mean, it's up to you.
So, are you asking if we need to give that to the PA's office to be, what?
Kept it as the official record, uh, soon notifying us of the public hearing.
Well, we got that on the agenda. Always add to the next agenda where it might.
Well, I would just give it to her and reports received by the county clerk. Not really an agenda I didn't talk about, but, you know, as she gets reports received by different departments, this would just be a, a notice received by the commission.
Announcements of other upcoming meetings and events, put them under that, have it up, and then turn it to the meetings or? Management reports.
Certified.
Don't need something to file.
Do we want to do it in a meeting or do you just give it to them and file it or what? Are you going to do that with every letter we get?
No.
Where are you going to draw the line at?
Certified notices of some sort that would affect our tax.
I get all kinds of religious information in there, I want me to cut some kind of, something or another, I don't know if they just.
Did you eat that veggie wrap on Friday?
No. If I go to hell for eating that turkey wrap or whatever it was, then they're going to be overlooking a lot of other stuff that I did. That back in my wallet, because I'm more refined and sensitive and stuff.
Okay, we got TIPS up. Before we go into closed session, do we have anything else?
Well, we need to go into closed session.
No, this is a different deal that Don.
Okay.
We're talking about the, the bridge closing coming up. I don't know how many people we have that work for the county that have to come across the bridge. I don't know if we have flex time or whatever, but just to try to help alleviate some of the traffic on there. If they do come from, I don't know, Ashland, Fulton, or some in that direction, I think we'll be able to give them flex time. Because that bridge is going to be bad around eight o'clock if they want to come in. I mean, I would come in an hour earlier and try to avoid it either way.
An hour is going to help them much.
Yeah?
I think two hours. I think if you're not across there by four o'clock, you're going to be stuck in traffic.
I don't think seven o'clock's going to be bad. You get seven fifteen, do that seven-thirty rush, it's going to be crazy.
I think that probably needs to be decided on within that carpet itself.
But I think that we as a commission ought to encourage it or say it's okay if someone.
There you go, people that live across the north of the river?
I don't think so. I have to check the bird.
The two employees that we have.
Sheriff and it could be, yeah, EMS, it could be, hopefully.
I would just like to.
They're going to, they're going to.
EMS, you're not going to be able to flex.
If they're on.
Sheriff, you're probably not going to be able to flex.
They have their schedules.
They've got a shift, they've got a shift.
They've got something up there.
No, the two employees that we have that live across the, since left county employment, so I'm not sure I have to check the bird.
I just want to encourage how we work to try to keep, even if it's a couple of vehicles, every little bit's going to help because they're coming down from three or four lanes and they're going to shoot down to two lanes coming across the bridge. So, it's going to be hectic for a little while, but it's going to be.
Sixty-three, it's going to be.
Two tent foots.
Patient.
There's going to be a lot of mirrors taking on.
I just go slow and drive decent, which I know not going to happen, but, so. Uh, even Namens could do it, somebody's got a late eight P, I'm just using example.
Switch it up with it in the past. You know, this, we've had accidents before where people got delayed. We just work with them. They just call in, tell us what's going on.
Okay, what was that letter we got from? About the telephone poles, what the hell was that? I gave a cuss.
I agree, I'm like, I'm like Chris, I think just bury them all underground.
Send them a check, Sam, you got a check?
Yeah.
Of course, did you see my other?
I helped Trump build.
Latter part of that, so you take down the telephone poles and now they hit the tree.
You would feel pretty good that day, you had a couple of them. Just had a couple of drinks.
Man, it was like, what was it, twelve hundred, twelve hundred people a year over the whole United States.
So, I can delete that one, that wasn't any, there was no purpose to that?
The kids driving gravel roads too fast.
The ones that are trying to, avoiding the highway, take gravel away, gravel roads.
Yeah, so it's a gravel road's fault, not the telephone pole.
Okay, so they just sent that to?
I don't know.
Copy us, I mean, they've copied Mark Allen, maybe we should call him.
I still get, I still get tougher down in Stockton, uh, by the town.
Yeah, I'm just trying to avoid making a copy and putting on each of your own desk so I scan and send it.
Did you give the clerk's office a copy?
Okay.
I might give you this letter.
Okay, I was telling, oh, the public noticing, you talked about that, then we don't. You're on the TIP Committee, so you're going to be in.
Yes, sir.
Are they going to do some kind of study, let us know what that, how that affects us even? Should.
Uh, yeah.
I was just asking if I was on it.
You're on it.
You got to be there.
You're on it.
Do we even vote on that? And that, the city votes on it, because we don't have a say in it, do we?
In what, your appointment?
In the TIP.
Yeah, you vote.
Yeah, I was wondering if I y'all last time.
To vote what, to allow the city to approve or disapprove it? I thought the city is one that approves it.
The commission decides.
The TIP commission decides.
Yeah, yeah.
So, now, she don't have to go to the city council? So, even if the TIP commission votes on it and approves it to go to the council, the council can vote it down. So, we don't have any say in it.
You do to the extent you have representation on the commission. This, this school district has, all the taxing districts have representatives.
Okay, so the school's got a couple, all of those are the ones going to get hit, oh, it's property tax. We're going to be hit minimally. But that just still has to go to the city council to approve this.
And this property taxing.
Yes, it doesn't, doesn't cost you anything. At the present, you just don't get any increase until the tip is paid off. Added value goes back to the TIP. But there are several pieces of legislation in this year that keep a tip from taking parts of the money that goes to different entities.
I'm not sure where I stay on tips.
Shelter board shops. I saw a couple of different pieces of legislation.
I don't, I think they're about as clear as mud because you can look at the future if you're taking a blighted area or whatever, you're trying to fix it up, how much are you returning on a B instead of C. So, I don't know. Kind of still out to pasture on that one. Tip for Ted. Been wanting to use it all day.
Tip for Ted? I have a letter from Department of Natural Resources. The Garden Farm Historic District has been approved, been nominated for the, uh, historic preservation. It has been approved in the National. It's nominated to the Garden Farm Historic District, that's at one seventy, and I think that's that house that's out there, so. That is now going to be on the National Register. Got the thing, Karen Platter is retiring from Russellville, so there's a reception, uh, March third, one thirty to four thirty at Trinity Lutheran Hall in Russellville. You got anything?
What's this, uh, the M R P C thing? Just to bring it up, that there's grants available for cities, county, school districts for echo recreation projects. So, I don't know, do we have a?
Yeah, I saw that.
Just a mailing that we can send us? I guess, do they send it to all the schools and stuff?
Well, we can apply for that too, for parks and whatnot.
Right. I mean, dude, how do the schools find out about this? Just M O R P C? Send them?
I doubt, I doubt that they send it out. I mean, we can. Somebody probably has a list of the contacts, the school districts and stuff, so.
I'd like to have superintendent who has been on the school.
Wait, wait, send it down. Give them the opportunity. A lot of people don't even apply for these things, because there's plenty sitting there to be used for that kind of stuff. Send it to you. Find it again.
I have one other email. Carl Vogel's birthday is March 7th, and we'd like to approve. I guess about a year exactly then since he was diagnosed with, they created cancer stuff. Anybody want to send Carl a few birthday?
You won't get one from us? Even that card that you did.
Yeah, I'll do what I was thinking.
Got your pretty writing on there?
Yeah.
And then get me a crayon and I'll sign it.
Anything else?
Yeah, make it look real. Make it look like it's printed up. Hold on. Just go clean it up. All right, man.
You're done?
Wait, wait, when's your, like, university on 50th?
It is, uh, Thursday at 3:00 P.M.
Why do they have to know about ads for that?
I have no idea, though. That's too many, they cancel.
All right.
I'll find out.
About that.
I'll find out. All right. Okay. Anything else? We shouldn't go into closed session?
I'll wait.
Roll call?
Sam?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Debbie, you can stay if you want. You and Kristen.
That email from the.
Uh, yeah, I just deleted it.